I'm going to call the meeting room to order. This is the Morton County Commission Regular Meeting for November 25, 2025. It is 5:30, and our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a roll call. Commissioner Morrell.
Here.
Commissioner Tocash.
Here.
Commissioner Buckley.
Here.
Commissioner Zachmeier.
Yes.
And myself, Commissioner Bame. All Commissioners are present. Up here, we also have Auditor Roan at the front, we have Sheriff Kirkmire, and Auditor, excuse me, our State's Attorney Copy in the back. Next, the approval of the agenda. Do want to add the Park Board resignation letter in there, too. We can do that under, with Dawn. Is there any other corrections or additions to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting of November 13, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the previous meeting of November 13, 2025. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the monthly bills and payroll.
Mr. Chairman, I have a family conflict with some bills from Malloy Law, so I would move to approve all bills except for Malloy Law, and then I need to be recused when that portion of the bills comes forward.
And I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve all bills and payroll except for the Malloy Law firm bills. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none of the roll call vote? Commissioner Zachmeier?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Morrell?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So then we need a motion to approve the bills that Andy's recusing himself from.
Make a motion to approve the bills for Malloy Law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills for Malloy Law. Is there any discussion? Moved and seconded, excuse me. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none? Commissioner Morrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Then we will move right into our agenda. Dawn LaFleur, our Morton County Tax Director, up first with abatements.
Just two Homestead Credit Abatements tonight, 7164 and 7165. 7164 is for 2024 from the city of Mandan. 7165 is a mobile home that was purchased in October, so we're doing three months of the Homestead Credit Abatement for 2025.
Motion to approve abatement number 7164 for 2024, city of Mandan, and 7165 for 2025 for three-month duration for Homestead Tax Credit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 7164 for 2024 in the city of Mandan, Homestead Abatement, and a mobile home abatement for 2025. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Hey, thank you.
That was too easy, Dawn. Next, we have Patrick Martin, our Emergency Manager.
Tonight, I'm requesting your approval and adoption of the 2025 Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan that we've been working on this year. I'll try to keep my remarks brief, just to give you a quick summary of the plan and the reasons for adoption. The first point I want to make is probably the most important point is with your adoption, it enables Morton County and the jurisdictions to apply for mitigation funding through FEMA that is, you know, of course, critical for the majority of these projects to be completed. The second item I wanted to note is it's the planning process has been, you know, over the course of pretty close to the last 10 months. A steering committee was formed. Representation on that steering committee consisted of non-government agencies, private companies, citizens, and local jurisdiction government representation. So we had a very wide range of Morton County represented in this plan, and I think what we got out of that is great. In fact, we set a new record for our survey responses. We had 925 survey responses, so we were happy with that. Got it, gleaned a lot of good information from the community there. The third point is these mitigation projects ultimately reduce the impact to the taxpayer when we do have disasters or any kind of incidents in the county. So what we're looking at is for basically the latest figures are for every dollar spent in mitigation funding for these projects, we save on the backside $4 of taxpayer money to deal with that disaster, whether it be through the response or through the recovery phase of things. And then the last item I want to talk about is our implementation plan. So with your adoption, excuse me, with your adoption tonight, we're going to take a look at really focusing on, over the course of the next five years while this plan is in effect, taking a look at what projects are going to give us the best benefit mitigation-wise for the county and for local jurisdictions. I think importantly, right now, the focus is on critical infrastructure and protecting that critical infrastructure from disaster. So I think that'll probably be our main focus moving forward initially, and then we'll move out to other projects, like I said before, that we find beneficial. So that's about all I have regarding the mitigation plan. I appreciate your continued interest in emergency management and especially this plan because it really drives our program in emergency management for the next five years. And then I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions for Patrick?
Mr. Chairman, just want to chime in. I used to be the one that would actually approve these plans on a state level so it was refreshing to be part of the actual planning process on a local jurisdiction, so grateful for that piece of it. But again, just reiterating, the cross-section of Morton County that was part of that planning process, my goodness, was there, I mean, virtually every respectful industry and impact across Morton County was providing solid input in the development of the plan itself. So kudos to the emergency management staff for pulling that team together. Make a motion that we approve the resolution to adopt the 2025 Morton County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan in accordance with the federal laws, including Robert T. Stafford Act and Emergency Assistance Act.
Second.
Sorry, Andy.
No, it's all right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2025 Morton County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And then, yeah.
I just wanted to add, too, we'll be going out to each individual jurisdiction, Mandan, New Salem, so on and so forth, for their local adoption as well, so that they can be included in all those points that I made, so.
Yep.
I just wanted to give you, take this time to give you a quick update on the Code Red Notification System. I believe I sent an email to all of you shortly after November 10. So there was an incident where the Code Red platform that we use for our mass notification in the county, there was an incident where they became, or had a cyber attack or ransomware that completely shut down the platform worldwide. That happened on November 10. We've been working pretty diligently with both Code Red and FEMA to try to get it resolved. The fortunate thing that we have is we switched, we made the decision to, prior to this, to switch our emergency notification platform to a vendor called HyperReach, and we had access, we gained access to that on November 1. So we've been busy trying to get people registered on that platform. But the reason why I want to bring that up tonight, the Code Red incident, is there's a possibility that because it's ransomware, cyber attack, that our, some of our citizens' information may be compromised, right? So we're looking at, we had a discussion this morning in the office, we're looking at putting out a press release informing our citizens of that, and some steps that they can take to maybe ensure that their information isn't compromised. We don't have 100% confirmation that anything has been taken or compromised, but we just want to make sure that we cover that base with our citizens. I guess, excuse me, some key points that we're going to emphasize that, because on the Code Red system, basically, the only information that our citizens that were signed up on that platform had were, of course, their names, phone numbers, email addresses, and mailing address, but probably the most important part is the password that they created with their user profile. So what we're going to be asking them to do is if, to change their password if they used it across multiple platforms on the Internet. So if they use the same password for their banking, they should probably get those passwords updated and changed. So we're looking at putting out that release tomorrow morning. We're actually doing it in conjunction with, our partnership with Burley County and the city of Bismarck. They also use that platform, Code Red platform, as well, and they're experiencing the same thing that we are as a jurisdiction. And as a reminder, like I said before, this is worldwide, so that's where we're at. So I just want to let you guys know, as a governing body, the actions that we're taking, and try to keep that information as safe as we can, and let our citizens know that they should take those steps.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've got a question. The, you know, this is getting to be pretty common where credentials get stolen, passwords get stolen, et cetera. Do we have any recourse to go back through the vendor to get our users some type of credit monitoring?
I don't know that for sure. Commissioner Tocash, I think we, I can talk with the State's Attorney and see, State's Attorney Copy, and see if that's an option to get that information out, and if it is, we certainly will. I do know, just from incidents in the past, that affected my information, you know, on different platforms or whatever, they do offer that credit protection. I think it's, well, I don't want to say, but I think it might be law that they have to, that the vendor has to, but don't quote me on that, I'm not a lawyer.
There may be a question to ask them, anyway.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions for Patrick? Okay. Do you have a clean copy of the resolution? Mine's got both sides, so, because you have it dated for today, if you have a, leave a copy with Heidi, and I can sign it after the meeting.
I'll get one for you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. All right. Thanks, Patrick. Next, we have John Psyke, our Morton County Engineer. Got some concurring resolutions, it looks like. Was all the DocuSigns I did last week?
I think that might be part of it, yes.
Yeah, probably.
Good evening, Commissioners and Auditor Roan. Before you, with five items total, four involve projects that were in the November 14 bid opening, and one involves selecting a consulting engineering firm for construction engineering on a project that was bid earlier this year. And one of the things I want to tell you about the four, they're not all in order on the agenda, but I'll go in the order that is on the agenda. The four of them are very consistent, and they all include, I included a, basically, a tabulation of the project, and then the low bidder, the bid amount, and the match that was originally required, the actual match due to the actual bid, and then the difference. And so that'll be the same across all four projects. And I'll start with concurrence for the award of a contract with Gladen Construction. We had been working on a project one mile south of Elmont on County Road 86. It's a bridge, and it's just south of our Elmont Bridge that we did several years ago. It's on the federal secondary road system, so it's funded 80% federal, 20% Morton County. It was originally supposed to be bid in '26 for construction in '27, but we were asked earlier this year if we could move it ahead, which we could, because we had been designing this one for quite a while, and it was ready to go. So they scheduled it for bidding in '25 for construction in '26, and I had enough time to get the match budgeted before I had finalized the budget. What was interesting is there were nine bidders on this project. I don't know if you remember the previous one a couple months ago? We had 10 bidders. So there's a lot of interest in this project, and there has been in our box culvert projects. And then before we can execute a contract with the contractor, we need this concurrence. And the one other thing that I wanted to talk about, all these, in all five items, we discussed all these last week at the road commission meeting, and the road commissioners reviewed it, and they recommend approval for all of them. So just have that taken care of. But in this attachment, as far as an attachment, there's a copy of the resolution that'll need a signature. In this case, the low bid was $570,407.65. Our estimate was $897,326, so that was a very pleasant surprise, because, you know, our difference is $83,000 just on the match. So it's going to be, we're very pleased, and one of the road commissioners has worked, Roger Hilli has worked with Gladen, and he said that they're a very good contractor to work with. So with that, I would be open to any questions you may have.
Commissioners, have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move to concur with the award of the North Dakota DOT contract with Gladen Construction Incorporated of Port, Minnesota, for a bridge replacement known as Project BRC-3027056 for $570,407.65, and execute the resolution for the return to the North Dakota DOT.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to concur with the, let's see, get the wording here, with the award of the North Dakota DOT contract with Gladen Construction for project number Is there any, in the amount of, sorry, $570,407.65. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, John?
Okay. Next one is for concurrence in a contract with Morris Seal Coat. We have a number of roads out around County Road 139, out around New Salem, that we had paved a number of years ago, and this is a project we had on the shelf for a while. And in August, they asked if we had any projects, DOT asked, because they had some money that had been not allocated in other states. And they said if we had something ready for it, we could get that bid. And once again, this is on the primary road system, so it's an 80/20 split, so we have a 20% or match on this one. And once again, we need approval of the resolution so we can execute a contract, and this one was a low bid of $205,830.29. We had an estimate of $196,980.80. So this was slightly over the engineer's estimate, but even at that, our match is What we have saved on the Gladen one will easily cover the rest of these, so even though the other projects are a little over the engineer's estimate. And with that, this one also had three bids on it, which is pretty good for a chip seal project. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you may have.
Commissioners, have any questions on this one?
Mr. Chairman, I move to concur with the award of North Dakota Department of Transportation contract with Morris Seal Coat and Trucking of Morris, Minnesota, for the chip seal project in the Glen Olin area for $205,830.29, and execute the resolution for return to the North Dakota Department of Transportation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to concur with the award of the North Dakota DOT contract with Morris Seal Coat and Trucking, Morris, Minnesota, for the chip seal project in the Glen Olin area for $205,830.29, and execute the resolution for return to the North Dakota DOT. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Our next one is another one that we'd had on the shelf for a while, and it was part of the August redistribution, and so we had an opportunity to get this one bid. It is hot mix overlay in St. Anthony, and the low bidder on this one is Northern Improvement. And once again, it's on the primary secondary road system, and so it's 80/20. We had two bidders, Northern Improvement and Strata. And once again, the road commission reviewed and recommended concurrence. The low bid was $644,597.53. The engineer's estimate is $596,598.32. The match is $128,919.51. So with that, I would recommend that we concur with that contract, and if you would have any questions, I'd be open to any questions you may have.
What are your wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I move to concur with the award for the North Dakota DOT contract with Northern Improvement Company of Bismarck, North Dakota, for the hot mix overlay project number SC-3026055 in St. Anthony for $644,597.53, and execute the resolution for return to the ND DOT.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to concur with the award of the North Dakota DOT contract with Northern Improvement Company, Bismarck, North Dakota, for the hot mix overlay project number SC-3026055 in St. Anthony for $644,597.53, and execute the resolution for return to the North Dakota DOT. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. The next one is for consulting, selecting a consulting engineer for construction engineering on a project that we had bid previously, and this is on the secondary system, it's what we consider off-system, and these two projects, two bridges, are 100% funded by the state, and so is the construction engineering. So we selected a consultant to handle all that construction engineering. We submitted, or issued a RFP on October, earlier in October. The proposals were received on October 23, 2025. We had eight consulting engineers submitting proposals. All were deemed responsive. One of the firms withdrew, so we ended up interviewing seven. Those interviews were conducted November 17, 2025. The interview committee consisted of Jackie Buckley, County Commissioner, Paul Tocash, County Commissioner, and myself. And after the interviews of all seven, and reviewing all the proposals, and how we looked at all their approaches, which was very interesting, because we had basically seven proposals with seven different approaches, and we came to the conclusion, which was unanimous, that more engineering should be the consultant that we would approve for construction engineering on this project. And as I said earlier, this is an off-system, so it's 100% state-funded, and so I'd be open to any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the selection of the committee of more engineering to perform the construction engineering for Project BRJ0030050PCN23716, structure replacements. It's for two bridges, one by Flasher and one by St. Anthony.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the selection of the committee of more engineering to perform the construction engineering for Project BRJ0030050PCN23716, structure replacements for bridges by St. Anthony and Flasher. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. My last item tonight is, once again, another resolution concurring with the award for the North Dakota DOT contract for micro-surface, and the contract would be with Aztec, Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation of St. Cloud, Minnesota. This one's a little different in that we had the plans ready, and we had looked at our estimate, and the low bid, there was only one bidder, which was Aztec, which is not uncommon for this type of work, but it was 22% over the engineer's estimate. So it was a little bit over, more than we would like to see, but after we looked at the bid, I had looked at it, and when we had gathered our numbers together, I had increased them some, but not as much as we should have. And looking back, the numbers we had taken in the past were a significantly longer project. It was one that was 18 miles, but it was two lifts, so it's equivalent to about 36 centerline miles. This one's only six miles. So even though we had increased- to about 36 centerline miles. This one's only six miles. So even though we had increased the quantities, the prices for the quantities for asphalt, liquid asphalt, the emulsion, and the aggregate, the bid was a little bit higher. So I requested a bid abstract from the North Dakota DOT to find out what each of the bid items were. And if you look at some of the things that typically would make a bid unbalanced are things like mobilization, traffic control, signage, things like that. All of those were almost dollar for dollar what we had estimated. The difference was the increase in the oil, which is kind of a specialized oil because it's polymer modified, and then the aggregate. And the aggregate is, it's a fairly small quantity in the world of micro-surfacing. Typically, this contractor likes to deliver their aggregate by rail because we don't have any of that type of aggregate anywhere in the state. So it has to come from somewhere in Minnesota. So either they have a much smaller quantity, so it's more expensive by rail, or else they have to bring it in by truck, which then is also more expensive, which we did not take into account in our bid. So given that, and looking at the abstract and the amount that we had bid for those items, I feel that it's a balanced bid, and it's a fair bid. And I would recommend that we concur with the resolution on awarding this contract. I'd be open to any questions you may have. And if you look at that table I told you about the first time, on the first project, the box culvert is below the engineer's estimate enough that even with these being over our match, we still have enough budgeted to cover the match for all of them.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to concur with the award of the North Dakota DOT contract with Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation, St. Cloud, Minnesota for the micro-surface project on County Road 139A west of Mandan for $468,142.11 and execute the resolution for the return to the North Dakota DOT.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to concur with the award of the North Dakota DOT contract with Asphalt Surface Technology Corporations, St. Cloud, Minnesota for the micro-surface, excuse me, micro-surface project number 3008059 and SU1-988057 on County Road 139A west of Mandan for $468,142.11 and execute the resolution for return to the North Dakota DOT. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. It's kind of nice to see five projects and they all five get a different award. So you're spreading the wealth around. Can I sign these at the end and leave them with Don?
Yep, that would be fine. And I'll just pick them up and, yep.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, guys. Actually, yeah. All right. Nope, Natalie said she's a quarter or 20 after because she has something with her son. So we are going to move into the planning and zoning stuff. Our first item on there is the request from Minnesota Power for a special use permit for a wind energy conversion facility known as the Longspur Wind Project. So we've gone back and forth on this one quite a bit. And according to, and I'm going to go with what our last state law passed as 4404-20.1, our public comment period, we are going to limit the comment period somewhat. You'll have a chance to speak. We're going to allow 20 minutes for and 20 minutes against, two minutes per speaker. Okay? So if you take up too much time, you're not going to allow the next person to speak. I have that right by that law. In the interest of time, if you have the same concern, or if we've heard it before, and we've had three meetings that everybody's had a chance to get up and speak, please just tell us that you indicate that you also have the same concern or point, but you're, we're allowing you to speak, but keep it short. We're going to let everybody have a little bit. Like I said, we've had three meetings where everybody should have had plenty of time to get up and speak at those. So with that, I'm going to open the comments. And this isn't a public meeting because, or a public comment period, it wasn't published in the paper. So we're just, this is part of the state law that we have to allow comment. And I'm going to allow it during this process while we're talking about it so we can use that information. Okay? So with that, we're going to start with those four. Whoever would like to speak in favor of the project will start the clock at 20 minutes, soon as the first one speaks.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Mitchell Bettenhausen. As you may know, I'm the project manager with ALLETE here on behalf of Minnesota Power's Longspur Wind Project and its special use permit application. I don't think there's anything new we need to add to the record. We have had a chance to address the full range of questions from the public, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and this commission. So Minnesota Power has demonstrated the project complies with Morton County Land Use Code, and we ask that you vote to approve the special use permit for this project. Thank you for taking the time to look at our application.
Thank you, Mitchell. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of, even if it's to concur or whatever, to give you the fair shot? And just so you know, we'll take comments in the room, then I'll ask.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Richard Scherrato, living in wind farm country. I'm here to express my support of the wind project. I contacted you all individually in email so you know my stance in favor of this project.
Thank you, Richard.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Geetson. And I'm here in favor of the Longspur Project. And as Chairman Bain just stated, this has been kicked back and forth and back and forth. We've heard pretty much everything, and I don't have anything new to add to that. So I would just like to say that it seems obvious to me anyway that the benefits far outweigh the negative on this as any big progressive project that has made life in North Dakota better, not worse. We all benefit in one way or another, especially our schools and 110 landlords that are in favor of this project. So I just want to encourage you to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yes, my name is Bill Dupong, and I live in the Wind Tower area also. And I wanted to express my favor of this project. It's meeting all of the criteria that are brought, that it is required to. It's on the same footprint, as you want to say, of the existing wind towers. And I'm very much in favor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else in the room right now? Nobody's, oh, going the other way. Ask if there's anybody online that would like to say something in favor.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yep.
Yeah, so, good evening, Mr. Chair, Board of County Commissioners. My name's Dr. Chris Olson. I authored the report, I believe, that you had in front of you at your last Board of County Commissioners meeting on infrasound, low frequency noise, shadow flicker, setbacks, and the like. And, you know, I reviewed the Longspur Project. I believe it does meet not only your county ordinances, but also is in compliance with the requirements of the North Dakota Public Services Commission. And with that, I would urge you to vote for approval of the project in the county and stand for any questions if you have them.
Don't see any questions forthcoming. Okay, go ahead.
Dave Burger from Alver County. I'd just like Mitchell to explain to you guys that ALLETE and Minnesota Power are being bought out, if I'm correct. Yeah, they're being bought out by a Canadian company, which is now being bought out by BlackRock. It's not negative or positive, but I just want that brought to attention. Thank you.
Yeah, you can. I'll hold up here for a minute.
So just to clarify, there is an acquisition going on. One of the companies that we've, it's a mutual approach to go from publicly held to privately held. And it's the Canadian Pension Fund, and the other is GIP, which is the Global Infrastructure Partners, who that correctly has been purchased by BlackRock. So that is a correct statement.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments in favor of the project, online or in the room? Any further comments? Okay, last call. Any further comments in favor? All right, seeing none. We will switch over, and we will go to those that are opposed. Are there any comments from those that are opposed to the project?
My name is Dawn Shepherd from New Salem. We live in the heart of all the wind towers and the wind farms. And can you, can you hear me better?
Yep.
Okay, Dawn Shepherd, okay. And I am opposed to it. We've just had our fill of it. Up to this point, we have allowed and not complained too much about the other ones. We've accepted it. They're in our backyard. They're to our left. They're to our right. The only place we have in our home to look, someplace where we're not looking at wind turbines, is out our front door. And that's all we're asking, is that area be left alone? And this is where this company wants to put more. These ones will be much larger than the existing ones. They are 210 feet higher. The other ones are three megawatts. These, I believe, are four, I was told by someone. At the October 28th County Commission meeting, Andy Zachmeyer, Commissioner Zachmeyer, made a motion to return this application back to P&amp;Z for further review of the reasons that they used from the Morton County Comp Plan of 2045. They at that time had recommended denial for the permit. Commissioner Zachmeyer also instructed Natalie Pierce, the Director of P&amp;Z, to have the P&amp;Z discuss the land use code, including that for special use permits and egg lands, saying that that part had barely been evaluated at all. At the November 19th Planning and Zoning meeting then, the latter part of those instructions did not get relayed to the Planning and Zoning Board, not by Natalie Pierce, the Director, and not by Commissioner Zachmeyer, who was on the Planning and Zoning Board. They were not told that those two issues were part of the packet and to be included. He said that it was part of their duty to enforce the land use code and evaluate. In order to do that, it needed to come up for discussion. Section 1004, Special Use Permits Approval Criteria, we actually feel that this actually leads to a part of where the Planning and Zoning could have a denial on there. And it, Part Three says a proposed use will comply with all appropriate regulations for the district in which it is located. The district it's located in is agricultural district from Section 2-030. The Regulations, Part Two, says that they should discourage any use which because of its character size or location would interfere with existing agricultural uses, create a nuisance for existing rural residents, create a negative environmental impact, or increase public costs. Well, at the first Planning and Zoning meeting, Jesse Kiss, the chairman, said that he really struggles because he says with all these wind turbines and wind farms, we aren't really preserving the rural character and the landscaping anymore. And he admitted, this area, we are plumb full of wind turbines at this point. Because of the height of the towers, the view shed is definitely impacted. The area is impacted. People move to the country for peace and quiet and privacy, he said. Maria Tomac on the board said, the height is huge, and they're four megawatts each. Dennis Rohrbach, who made the motion, said that he wanted a motion that would protect the rural character and scenic beauty. Now, if the Planning and Zoning would actually have looked at the special use permit criteria and the district regulations criteria.
Dawn, your two minutes.
Oh, okay.
They're up.
Then, okay.
Just trying to be fair to everybody.
Sure, they would have discussed this. And I'm just asking that the County Commission return it to them to review it the way they were supposed to the first time.
Thank you, Dawn.
Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Mary Greener, Morton County resident. I have relatives that live right next to the project. One of the statements made earlier, global infrastructure project. What does that tell you? One world order, right? This is a Green New Deal boondoggle. It's a taxpayer just absolutely mess. We also talked about private property rights last time, but you got to think about the private property rights of the people that live right next to it. They also have private property rights, and they moved to the country for those reasons. But the one thing I do want to kind of stress a little bit more are all the medical conditions that we have addressed, and nobody's, nobody has really addressed that. What I think would be a great idea is to turn it back to the Planning and Zoning Board and give them a 90-day window for them to do some further research because there are a lot of allegations about the cancer, about the hearing, about the epilepsy. And those things are real. Are they United States reports? No, they're coming out of Canada, which, by the way, they're buying this company. And they're coming out of Germany. They're coming out of Portugal. So these, it still happens. Just because those reports aren't from here does not mean that they're not accurate. There's a negative environmental impact, and I'm going to ditto what Dawn Shepherd had said just earlier. The Planning and Zoning did not, the instructions weren't followed properly to look into the other parts of the, I'm at a loss for words, but you know what I mean.
Land code.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Chair, Bain, Commissioners, my name is Curtis Junt, 43 and a half year engineer in the energy industry, very familiar with all these new energy projects that are coming out. I have been, as an energy engineer, as an energy economist. I've been against wind power since it started really coming on the scene here big time in the early 90s. It makes no sense. It is part of the existential threat to our country. It's contributing to it, which is taking government funds to increase our $38 trillion national debt. And somebody, right at the local level, we have to stop this insanity. The only reason this thing works, and it doesn't even work, it's not economic on its own unless you've got state and federal funds funding it. Now you're going to propose a wind project that's really friends of ours are living around and disturbing the serenity of their, I don't see wind towers in this picture, and I don't see wind towers in this one back here, right here, your logo. You didn't have to change that, but the horse and the cattle, the cow and calf, you might have to change that, start adding direct air capture, data centers. What else is going to come at these people? Just because out of state entities come with their big dollars, now we got BlackRock. The Minnesota PUC approved the acquisition from ALLETE on October 3rd, and this power is supposedly going to benefit the whack jobs in Minnesota. I have, we have, my life in that property in Minnesota, very in tune with what goes on, what's going on with the energy. They are absolutely insane. And what happens to put more wind on? When are we going to stop this? It's jeopardizing our energy grid, our reliability. You have to pony up, to follow wind, you have to pony up about 40% or more of load following natural gas fire generation. Every, these things come online with such a huge carbon footprint, if you believe that that's actually affecting our environment, CO2, carbon. They come online with such a huge carbon footprint, I don't think they ever come up to even positive. It's insane. It's destroying, okay, so in the oil and gas industry that I come from, if we had a wood duck die in a pit, yep, let me finish my thought here. If we had a wood duck that would have died in one of our drilling pits or anything, the environmentalists were honest like fleas on doo-doo. But these guys are whacking bald eagles, and I love bald eagles, and golden eagles, and migratory birds out of the sky. But that's justified collateral damage. You guys have to help stop this draining and growing of our national debt by projects like this that make no sense.
Thank you, Curtis. Anybody else in the room that's in opposition?
Hi, I'm Galen Becker, and I just wanted to make a few comments and hope you'll consider them. Besides them being a big eyesore, they take away from nature, which I sure enjoy and have been involved in many other conservation efforts. They contribute to more pollution in their creation and disassembling than what they save. And these wind turbines don't generate as much revenue as it costs to mine, manufacture, transport, assemble, and disassemble. And what I've heard is that typically, these big windmills take about a half a million dollars to disassemble. And if that's been in the plan too, as to who's going to be doing it, or if it's going to be taxpayers disassembling it too, once the life of the generator is gone. And I could go on some more, but I just hope you go back to the planning on it and take a look at that again, too. And I, too, am sick of all the windmills I've seen. I don't think they help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Galen. Anybody else in the room?
I'm Dalton Hitchcock, and I live right in the heart of the wind towers. I'd like to specify a little bit more as far as the Planning and Zoning Committee being asked to go back and reevaluate this project. Because I believe that the grounds for denial was legal to start with, and it's very suspicious why it would do a 100% turnaround at the next meeting. I just -- everybody I've talked to says the same thing. They've never heard of anything like that. And Natalie didn't talk to the Planning and Zoning Board and tell them that, hey, the thing about it is, these were the reasons that Andy Zachmeyer made in his motion. Andy Zachmeyer was on that committee, and he sat there, and he never said a word. And Chairman Kiss asked, you know, what did we talk on this about? You know? Commissioner Zachmeyer sat there and never said a word. So, therefore, this has to go back to the Planning and Zoning Committee and be evaluated, because these wind towers are a nuisance, and that's in the code. So, basically, I'm asking the Commission to send this back to the Planning and Zoning Committee to reevaluate this, because this is a little bit suspicious of what happened. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Holly Birch. I'm a 30-year instructor at Bismarck State College in the Energy Department, as well as a former plant operator. I guess some of my concerns with this, and I'm new to this particular one here, is the problems that we're having with grid saturation with wind. We keep adding wind and adding wind and adding wind, and what happens is the wind, when it doesn't blow for the lower wind towers that are there, it doesn't necessarily blow for the higher ones. So, what do we do? We keep closing down coal-fired plants. We keep, quote-unquote, "replacing them with wind" as per our attempt to be green, and it's destroying the reliability. I don't know how many people here lost power during Winter Storm Yuri, but Morgue Grand Sioux, my co-op, shut down people's power to try to push them to Texas at minus 20 degrees here. I didn't lose power at my house, but I know neighbors who did. And I've heard people on air tell them, on KFAR, tell somebody that that happened to that they were lying. And I've gotten to the point where I am more and more cautious of how I'm setting up my house and where I live to be ready for situations like that. So, this is going to affect our reliability. One of these days, we're going to get slapped, and we're going to get slapped hard. The next step will be batteries. Everybody says, "Oh, then we can put in batteries." Check out what happened to the agricultural property around Mossland in California. They had a massive, massive lithium battery fire, and the fumes and the chemicals that went into the air traveled downwind. And so, the people who are around some of these, not necessarily the wind turbines here because we're not looking at batteries there, they better take that all into consideration. I hope people here are considering getting backup generation at their home, because, I'm sorry, folks, I watch Minnesota. I watch SPP. I watch MISO. I watch PJM, where we buy a lot of power. I'm involved with the transmission project right now that is connecting us to the West Coast. It's coming. And I've even been told by people at some of the companies that the small-town places are not going to -- power's going to go to Twin Cities before it comes to us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Holly. All right, we have -- go ahead. Come on up.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Bob Hoff. I live in the area, landowner in the area. Mr. Curtis Junt here, he pretty much covered my speech perfectly. There's just a couple of things I'd like to add to it. These wind towers, when it gets 20 below, they start drawing power to heat their gear oils, and when it gets much more wet, they shut them down, and then they're drawing power off the grid. Now, is that the perfect time to be pulling power off the grid, when it's 30, 40 below? I don't think so. This is also, it's been tried in Europe. This global green energy is being tried. It's not working. Germany and these other -- Belgium are bringing back their coal-fired plants because they can't make demand, and the energy costs keep going up and up, and people can't afford it. So, like you said, it's insane. It didn't work in Europe. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and expecting different results. Please stop this insanity.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else in the room? How about online? Anybody online want to speak? You have about three minutes yet, and then we're done, so go ahead.
Mr. Chair, if I may speak?
Yep.
My name is Janelle Mormon. I would just like to, again, ask that you take one last look at this project and what it would do to the scenery in our part of the country. I just emailed each of you this morning and sent you some pictures that I hope you were able to view. I feel like I'm a record at this point, but I just, I can't give up. My family fought dang hard and worked even harder to obtain this land and keep it going. Blood, sweat, and tears poured into this land for over years. And my connection to this land isn't to make a dollar or be rich. My connection to the land is legacy and beauty. And we work hard to keep the legacy going that my family started. We just want to ensure we keep this land in our family and preserve the natural landscape and beauty and function as it was intended to. You know? Money doesn't always make things easier. More money is not always the answer to the many questions that arise. In fact, it can be the root that tear our family apart. And we can discuss the discrepancies between this study and that study, and we can argue that neither may be correct as far as being wildlife and health concerns or not, but we argue is the beauty and serenity of the land. The scenery will not improve if the wind towers go up. You simply, you can't argue that. Does it forever be destroyed if these towers go up? Once the tower's up, there is no going back. You can't return the land to how it was before those towers moved in, and you can't remove the tons of concrete that go to the ground for each tower. I just want to finish that. I know the rain I face to talk at each of these meetings, but at the end of the day, I have to fight for what I want to continue to see when I look out my window.
Okay, Janelle.
I hope that can be respected. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Is there anyone else that wants to speak against? Okay. One more call. Anybody else that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we will not take any more comments at this time then. We'll be done. Okay, Commissioners? Natalie, you have anything to say?
Basically, I'm just, I'm here for questions.
Okay.
You have the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and yeah, I'm here for questions.
The question was brought up if there was -- Commissioner Zachmeyer made a motion that all questions weren't answered in that motion. Is that, in the overall view, that they get answered? But specifically, 1, 2, 3, I mean, is that...
When you say 1, 2, 3...
Yeah, I mean, how he worded his motion.
So, I looked back at the motion to try and make sure I caught everything, going back to Planning and Zoning. There are a number of things. I think he said "ag." And I guess I may have missed that it's, you know, the zoning definition, but I can give you my explanation of that piece of it. I think, basically, we have a definition of each zoning category, so residential, agricultural, commercial. And it talks in the, in Section 2 of our Land Use Code, what the character of each of those districts should be and the nature of those districts. By the fact that we allow special use permits for industrial uses in ag already basically is contradictory to that definition. So, if we say we're going to reserve ag for this type of characteristic, we would then not allow industrial uses in ag. But we can't do that because there's nowhere else really to put these large uses. I mean, I know in other applications that have gone through Planning and Zoning, we had the discussion on the DAC use, you know, why don't we just rezone it to industrial? We do not want to rezone 26,000 acres to industrial, because basically what that does is if you rezone to industrial, every use that we allow in the industrial category could go anywhere on those 26,000 acres. It doesn't make sense, because you still at least preserve some part of that ag use and ag character. You know, so that's why we basically, we allow these types of projects in ag, because they're just so big. So, that's the discrepancy. I guess that's why I didn't connect it. If that was part of Andy's motion to say "ag," that is what would have been discussed at Planning and Zoning, is our internal contradiction between those two things, that we allow industrial uses in ag, and then we would have moved along, I guess, I think is what would have happened.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question just for Natalie. I've left two voicemails for her since about the middle of July. Never gotten a response on either of them. My name is Holly Birch.
Holly Birch. My voicemail box, what number did you leave it at?
The one that I was transferred to from the...
Yes, you can...
Go ahead.
Okay. Transferred to by the front desk?
Whoever answered the phone when you were not there.
Do you know what number you called, though, in the first place?
I'd have to look right at mine.
Do look, because, I mean, I've gone through my voicemails, and I delete them when I get done with them, and I don't have anything in there from you or anybody else that I haven't responded to. So, I'm wondering if it went...
Did you email or call?
If it was a -- like, if you leave me a voicemail and an email, I'll usually, I mean, depends on whether, which one is more convenient, you know? If I email, if I'm -- sometimes it's a quick thing, and I'll shoot an email back. But if you only left a voicemail, then I call you back.
I'll have to look.
Because we do, we do have another Natalie in the county, and depending on where you called, I mean, there shouldn't be a mix-up, but sometimes I've gotten emails for her, she's probably gotten emails from me. I mean, I don't know why that would have happened, but...
I was specifically given your full name, so I asked for your name.
Yeah. Okay.
Any discussion up here?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the motion to send it back to Planning and Zoning from the County Commission was that the Planning and Zoning Board to review this project in regards to Future Land Use Policy, FLU 1.5, then to review the objectives and policies listed in Goal Number 1 and Number 2 of the Future Land Use Code, or the, excuse me, the 2045 Comprehensive Plan, and to review Table 1, Zoning Compatibility, Secondary Compatible Zoning Districts, which was also part of the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. The main reason was that Planning and Zoning, the motion to deny, was based on the Comprehensive Plan and not the other Land Use Code, which in itself is fine, but Goal Number 1 and Goal Number 2 don't apply to this project. When you look at what's required for Goal Number 1 and Goal Number 2, it does not apply. And then it was to review this project in regards to Section 5-180 of the Morton County Land Use Code. This project, from the entire time, has never, there's never been any testimony, never no proof, no evidence that this project in any way violates Section 5-180 of the Morton County Land Use Code. As far as green energy, which country is going to buy this project? Which country has going on, and what other other countries? There is nowhere in federal law, and State's Attorney Copy can correct me if I'm wrong, that gives Morton County or any county a sudden jurisdiction to start questioning the tax code or foreign policy. This is about land use. The county has jurisdiction in land use, doesn't have jurisdiction in everything else that gets considered with it. And, Mr. Copy, if I'm wrong, please correct me. There's nothing in North Dakota Constitution or in the United States Constitution that gives local government a sudden authority to replace the judgment of our elected leaders. Some of these things that are being talked about, that needs to be taken to our legislators. Senator Hoven, Representative Fedorcheck, Senator Conrad...
Kramer.
Excuse me, Kramer. I'm sorry, I do that every once in a while. Governor Burgum's our Interior Secretary. That's where this stuff needs to be taken. It's outside our jurisdiction to all of a sudden get involved in it. We could probably pass a resolution requesting certain things, but that doesn't mean you get to use those things to all of a sudden judge land use. If anybody has any case law, any type of law, any type of constitutional amendment, any type of rules whatsoever that gives the county the authority to go into those areas, please bring them forward. And then it'll get addressed. That's why we have a State's Attorney and we have the auditor to take those type of things. those type of things. So, it was sent back. I have the packet in front of me. The Comprehensive Plan evaluation did occur. It might not have occurred to the satisfaction of most, but it did occur. Goal Number 1, Goal Number 2, Goal Number 6, Goal Number 7, were all reviewed at planning and zoning once it was sent back. There would be nothing more to come from this, sending it back to planning and zoning. But I do have a motion unless other commissioners would like to comment.
So, popular for the comment or not, but I am going to make one, and I'm a private property rights. Somebody told me today that if you take a government payment, which they say the subsidies on the wind towers are taxpayer dollars, well, we also take money for crop payments, livestock feed payments, when we have a severe storm. We take all kinds of government money. So, then does that lose? Do we lose all of our rights every time we take a dime? I mean, honestly, that's not going to be one of my arguments. When I always, we will go out there and we look at electrical lines, big wind tow, or the wig, whatever, the metal ones, they go across, you see them from quite a ways. You see the telephone towers with the, so we have cell service. We have all this stuff that's out there. Yeah, they're different than the wind towers, but we have, the biggest thing that we keep seeing is with that, we see this view. View shed is not guaranteed in your ownership of land. There's only one guaranteed view shed in this county, and it's the cemetery, South Mandan. And I'm sorry if that's what it is. Do I say I like wind towers? Not necessarily. I just cover the whole state. I see them when I go north to Minot, I see them when I go west all the time, up in the northeast corner, and the northwest corner. There's wind towers everywhere. And necessarily, no, I don't like them, but I understand it. So, we've gone a lot of progress because of our property rights. You walk out to your fence line, you turn around, what you see is what's yours. Behind you is your neighbors. And that's a principle that I stand by and have for years, so I'm not just, I'm not changing my mind on that. And anybody can come and argue with me. I will talk to you, I will visit with you, and we can go back and forth, and I will do that. So, if you buy it, you have the right to make some decisions about that land. Okay? Anybody else have any comments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think there, we are, even as a state, we're probably becoming heavy in wind turbines.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to drive from Fargo to Beach and never, every time you're around a corner, every time you crest a hill, there's wind turbines. Don't want to drive from the Cannonball River all the way to Lake Medagoshie and see wind turbines all the time. But that is a legislative question more than it is a county commission question. The goal number one about protecting the scenic beauty specifically mentions Fort Lincoln State Park and the Veterans Cemetery, and any other area that's actually deemed a scenic view, which would then be the scenic view overlooking the Missouri River Valley of the Bismarck-Mandan area, and the scenic view at Sweetbryer. Those have been designated. After that, there are none. This area where these are going to go is not designated a scenic view by anyone. There's no wildlife production areas in the area. That's, that's, that's what those goals were for, but the goals were reviewed at the last planning and zoning meeting. You don't always have to like a project, but the only way to treat everybody fairly is to enforce the rules fairly. As soon as you start making variations of the rules, sooner or later, somebody's rights are going to get trampled on a lot worse than the project that got approved or denied.
Mr. Chairman, make reflection back, excuse me. There's a dialogue that comes up through the years. Reflect back on Governor Link, 1973. He made, made a statement at a conference. "We do not want to halt progress. We do not plan to be selfish and say North Dakota will not share its energy resource. No, we simply want to ensure the most efficient and environmentally sound method of utilizing our precious resources for the benefit of the broadest number of people possible. And when we're through with that, and the landscape is quiet again, let those who follow and repopulate the land be able to say our grandparents did their job well. The land is as good, and in some cases, better than before." This is brought up during the lignite boom, the coal boom in the early 70s. It was brought up again during the, the significant oil boom. I bring it up during this for the wind towers. It's going to come up again wherever that next evolution will be for, for power needs. It's going to surface again and again. But again, emphasize the words, "We do not want to halt progress. We do not plan to be selfish and say that we will not share our energy resources." But also, as a developer, when looking at the location of this, yes, there are existing wind towers there. As a developer, you put where the population is. You build your concentration where it makes best sense. The concentration where the existing towers are, it makes better sense to put them there, because they're already there. It may not be satisfactory for the people that are, that have to view it. We've discussed that. It's going to be a topic for time and time again. But again, as said earlier, my property rights end at my fence line. My neighbors want to put junk in their yard, they can. They want to put up a wind tower in their yard, they can. My right ends at my fence line.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion, if you're ready.
I am ready.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve the request from Minnesota Power for a special use permit for a wind energy conversion facility known as Longspur Wind Project on approximately 26,000 acres, located in the various sections of Township 140 North, Range 88 West, Township 139 North, Range 88 West, Township 140 North, Range 87 West, Township 139 North, Range 87 West. Morton County, as the project complies with the future land use policy, FLU 1.5, and Table 1, zoning compatibility, secondary compatible zoning districts hold within the Morton County 2045 Comprehensive Plan. The project also complies with Section 5-180 of the Morton County Land Use Code with the recommended conditions of Number 1. Wind project components may not be developed or installed on properties that lie within the residential zoning district, even though such properties may lie within the proposed project boundary. Condition Number 2, the applicant must solicit letters of acknowledgement from all parties that hold major infrastructure easements within the project boundary. Letters should state any concerns or special considerations regarding, regarding impacts of the project on existing infrastructure. These letters should be submitted to the zoning administrator as soon as practicable, and at least 90 days prior to the start of construction. All lighting shall be shielded to direct light toward the ground unless otherwise required by another permitting, another permitting authority. And Number 4, prior to the start of construction, the applicant must develop and execute a road use agreement that meets the satisfaction of the Morton County engineer.
Before anybody seconds it, that first one, Commissioner Zachmeyer, you said Township 140 North, Range 88 West. This, in the packet, says 89 West. It was 88 of the other one? I just want to make sure we have that number correct.
I'm pretty sure it's 88 West.
There, there's more than, I mean, there's so many.
There's 89 West, 88 West, depends on which sections we're addressing.
Right, it depends, yeah. There were, there were both of them.
Okay, I just, so the motion is correct. We didn't, whoops, sorry. You want to, you have to redo it.
Right. You could say the project boundary is presented by the applicant that we have in front of us.
We'll go by what they have presented. We'll use your motion, but the numbers are by what was said. Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the request from Minnesota Power for a special use permit for a wind energy conversion facility known as the Longspur Wind Project on approximately 26,000 acres in the sections that apply to the applicant's permit. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, I will do a roll call vote. Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Tokash?
Yes.
Commissioner Morrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
And myself, Commissioner Bam, yes. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for being
Our next item is the Schontz subdivision. This is in the northwest quarter of Section 22, Township 139 North, Range 84 West. This is located, Judson is, Judson is down that way. This is Old Ten, it's right here. The applicants are Michaela Schontz and Jeff Lenny. They are looking for just one residential lot of 4.96 acres and a rezoning from ag
So, we do have a designated corridor along this county road, but deeds were not necessarily recorded, so we're just, they're doing 75 feet of right-of-way, just to cover ourselves and utility easement. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval, and I can take any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions for Natalie? Or does anybody have anything to say on this project? I think the room pretty much cleared out, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to recommend approval of the final plat of the short-form subdivision known as Schontz subdivision, and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential, as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code, and is in keeping with the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final plat of the short-form subdivision known as Schontz subdivision, and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Our next item is the Solar Meadows Third subdivision. This is in the northeast quarter of Section 21, Township 139 North, Range 82 West. So, this is the business loop, and truck stop would be that direction. The subdivision is out that way. The applicant is Dale Stekler. This is essentially, so the Solar Meadows First subdivision, the county commission approved that. The county commission approved Solar Meadows Second, adjusting some lot lines. During Solar Meadows Second, there was not adjustment of utility easements to follow those lot lines. So, this is essentially just coming back behind that subdivision and adjusting the utility easement. So, these, these are the same lots that were in Solar Meadow Second. It's just they have moved some utility easements. That's, that's it. That's all this is for, is just to accept those revised utility easements. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval, and I can take questions.
Any questions, commissioners? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the final plat of the long-form subdivision known as Solar Meadows Third subdivision, for the purpose of accepting changes to the utility easements.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final plat of the long-form subdivision known as Solar Meadows Third subdivision. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Our next item is the North Country Estates Third subdivision. This is in the southeast quarter of Section 24, Township 140 North, Range 82 West. The applicant is CF Properties LLC. This is in the North Country Estates subdivision. This is all residential. Everything around it that's frosty colored is ag. The applicant is just looking to reconfigure the boundaries between three existing residential lots. Gray. Three? Nothing.
Oh, so this is...
Your color patterns just blow my mind. Sorry.
I'm sorry. We, we, for zoning, there's kind of a standard.
I know.
Yeah, sorry.
I need to get some different glasses for that.
Although, although I did do black and white.
Yeah, that works better.
Yeah. I, I feel like it would be worse if I had hashes this direction, dots this direction, you know, and a big circle, small circle. You'd probably go a little nuts with that, too.
I always said I hated economists because of their bar graphs and their colors, but now you're, you're rivaling them.
Yeah, planners got them. So, this is just lot line adjustments between these three lots, and planning and zoning commission did recommend approval.
Commissioners, have any questions for Natalie on this one? Do we have a motion?
I recommend to amend the approval of the finer plat of the long-form subdivision known as North Country Estates Third subdivision, as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code, and the changes in keeping with the established character of the subdivision. It's on 79.84 acres in the southeast quarter of Section 24, Range 82 West, Morton County.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the final plat of the long-form subdivision known as North Country Estates Third subdivision. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
This next one is just a visual representation of a change in a stormwater easement from Honey Hills Estates First. We had the applicant who had submitted their stormwater plan. The county had approved the plan and the plat, and then DOT came back and said they don't want them to take the ditch block out, so they had to redo their whole stormwater plan. So, this was one item that changed in the stormwater plan. So, this is just a stormwater and drainage easement, essentially just accepting that change, since the county is the entity that holds those easements for the public. And planning and zoning commission recommended approval.
Questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Tokash.
Natalie, just one quick question. I, I know I'm splitting hairs here, but, so due to North Dakota DOT rescinding permissions, my understanding is they never, the permission was never granted to remove that ditch block. Is that correct?
And we could, we could just say DOT does what DOT does, and it resulted in changes to the stormwater plan. I think that part, I'm just trying to explain how we came about this. This is just, so this easement doesn't, DOT didn't have to look at this, they don't have to approve it. This is just the county accepting a new location for a stormwater easement.
I, I understand that. My, I guess my, the reason I brought this up is we're talking to the DOT, or insinuating the DOT pull the permit back or approval, and I'm not sure they ever granted that approval.
Yes.
I just wanted to be accurate with that.
Yeah, no, to, to explain that, so DOT has different levels of approvals in the past on projects like this, at least all the ones that...
on projects like this, at least all the ones that the engineer had seen, there was a certain level of approval you get to, and then you do the project. Officially, you are supposed to take those permits all the way to the top of the food chain, DOT, which it seemed like we had trouble finding out where that is. I mean, we, many people.
So, the permit, the approval was never given?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
From the top level.
Right.
From the lower level it was, but we found out that's not the real approval.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Does anyone have a motion then?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the revised stormwater and drainage easement on Honey Hills Estates first subdivision, lots four and five, Block 1, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the supplemental stormwater and drainage easement for Honey Hills Estates first subdivision, lots four and five, Block 1. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
Auditor Roan.
So the last page of your packet is the proposed meeting schedule for 2026. There's two of them that have a little note off to the right. Those are the only deviations from the second Thursday, fourth Tuesday schedule. So the first one is the first meeting in June, the Board of Equalization has to be held by, I think it's the 10th, or maybe it's the 8th. I don't know, it's pretty early.
Is that a Tuesday, then?
So.
The 4th?
No. Over to the left, it says Thursday.
Oh, sorry.
So we couldn't just keep it the same week as normal on Tuesday because that is election day.
It's a week earlier.
So it's actually a week early.
Yep.
Yes. And then the other one is in August, the preliminary budget has to be approved by August 10th, and so our regular meeting schedule would have been the 13th, so that one just moved up a week also to the 6th.
Well, if it is, it's still Thursday night, I can run, I can be at the meeting.
Okay.
Because parking doesn't start until 6:00 a.m. the next morning. Okay, anybody have any comments or, you can always take a look at it later if we don't, we don't have to approve this even, do we?
We have to, no, it's consensus, but I have to send this over to Dakota Media so that they slot those times.
Those times.
I don't know if the city still puts that calendar, they still print that calendar? They put that in that calendar?
Didn't last year.
They're doing it all online now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's electronic.
But I'm updating my calendar.
Yeah. Okay, everybody?
I'll be gone, but that's okay.
There's going to be some of that. Anybody, everybody in agreement then for now? I mean, we can move a date if we have to as we get closer, if something really, two or three of us can't make it. Okay, sounds good, general consensus. Next, we have the park board resignation. We don't have a letter here in front of us, they didn't bring it down.
I just got it emailed to me today.
Yeah, it was just today.
I can just read what Jesse.
So she'll read it, but we need to approve that letter of resignation so that we can open up the applications to get another board applicant in. And sooner the better, I guess. If anybody needs to be on a park board, we're looking for somebody.
I believe we're currently soliciting for board positions.
Yep, there's several out there right now. Yep.
Not the park board, though. They expire June 30th, so.
So yes, for the listening public, there are several boards that have positions that are up, and if you're interested, we would love some new blood, some new ideas.
Okay, so, whoops, I'm trying to scroll down here. Jesse said that he, given my personal and work schedule, I think it's in the board's best interest for me to drop off and for somebody with more availability to fill my seat.
Jesse Kiss me.
Yep.
Yes, Jesse Kiss on the park board, yes.
Okay. Commissioners have any questions or a quick motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we accept Jesse Kiss's resignation from the Morton County Park Board, and we thank him for his dedication and his expertise in several of the projects that the county park board had successfully completed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Jesse Kiss from the Morton County Park Board. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
How much time this gives in planning and zoning, though?
What's that? As long as he doesn't leave planning and zoning.
It just gives him more time.
Yeah. Anything else, Don?
No.
Okay. Next, we have the public comment period as required by North Dakota Century Code 44-04-20.1. I will open that public comment period to anybody in the room. Calling once. Any comments from in the room? Twice. Any comments from in the room? How about online? Any public comment from online? Any public comment from online? And last call, any public comment from online? All right. It was opened at 7:06 and closed. I will close the public comment period. I don't think security wants to comment, so. At 7:06 also. All right. Anybody have anything else good for the order?
Mr. Chair, for the listening public, if you haven't taken out your turkey, do so now. But reminder that the grand opening of the Holiday on Main Christmas lights takes place on Friday. I believe Santa Claus is going to be present, rumor has it. And again, this is an open door for all of Morton County, much less this entire region, what that event does for.
Yep.
For all of us. And coordinated through the Man in Progress organization, which is one of my portfolios.
We'll just say Bismarck wishes they had it.
Bismarck does wish they had it.
I'll go with that. And I did have, you guys, I had said I was going to bring a deal from the Chamber EDC on a memorandum. It's in my pickup, if you're still here, when I walk out, I can give you a copy of it. If not, I'll get it to you this week, sometime early next week. Okay? It's just something to look at and then start thinking about how, it's actually the city of Mandan's MOU with them. It won't be the same for us, but in a general respect of how we would want to change anything, that's what I want you guys to look at. Okay? Anything else good for the order? Seeing none, we have completed our agenda. We are adjourned.